Yeah, I think I'll sit.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we call the meeting to order, we need to appoint Jeff. So with the recommendation of Bonnie, the board has decided to appoint Jeff Hyde to fill their position until the end of this term, which is June 30th, 2020. Can I get a motion, please?
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? I think there may be an oath there for you. Does he have an oath there?
It should be in front of you.
In front of me. There, no, I'm sorry. That's pretty old. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. Agenda is set. We've got a few presentations. I think we'll start with Bonnie. Bonnie's with us tonight. So we've got a plan for Bonnie and recognize all her years. How many years, Bonnie?
Hmm, twenty.
Twenty. We got her. Thank you for everything you've done for the school.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie.
I almost voted, I almost went, I want to.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I think Danielle has her next presentation.
Yeah, I'll start with the, there are two courses that we're packing for new course proposals for the first read. One of them is listed in your packet for EP portfolio prep. It's another art class. Since then, Kim and I have worked on adjusting what the class is going to be, what it could be. So the class is going to be called Portfolio Art. And what we hope it can do is it supports those students that are taking EP art. Those students often need extra time to submit a portfolio to the college board so that they can get credit for that. But also it'll support the students who want to take that other art class that may go on to college and they'll have a portfolio at their disposal to use for, in that endeavor. So that's one of the courses that's on the agenda. And also the timing in which that would be offered would be a semester course and it would go up against ceramics, which is another art elective. So that's how we plan on running out with a slightly different existing proposal. The other course is called Basic Music Theory and that would run every other year opposite of the history of American music. So these are two new courses that we're proposing. I have both instructors with me this evening if you want to ask any questions.
So Danielle, it seems like for art students, they've already, they've taken all the art classes that they've been able to take and this is kind of, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. So it seems like they've taken, this is loophole, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I know. I know the difference. It seems like they've taken all the art classes that they can and they still had interest in taking more art classes and then this provides them with that opportunity then to do so.
Kind of. It's for students who in ninth grade have shown an interest in art in the future. They're very talented in art and they want to pursue art possibly as a career. And they've taken studio in art, they've taken draw and paint, and then they want to further on to AP art. It will help provide a place for them to build skills in concepts and materials because with AP art, they have to come up with their own sustained investigation based on what they previously know. And this year, teaching AP art, I see a deficit in that and they're really struggling. So the portfolio would help prepare them for AP, but it would also help them build a portfolio that they can take with them outside of Oakfield to use towards college. I have one student this year who's in AP who I suggested, I talked to all of them this year and I said, what do you think if they, you would have had AP option, I mean a portfolio option, would you have done that? Do you think that would have been helpful? And I explained what it would be and the one student said, I didn't even know what a portfolio was and I've applied to a college and they asked me for my portfolio and I don't have one. Because when you go for art, you need to show them a portfolio. If you don't, you can say you're an art major, but you don't really have a chance to get a scholarship and they don't really take you very seriously. So if you have a portfolio to propose to that school, if you want to go for art, it looks way better for the student. So it's more to prepare them for college, but also to prepare them for AP so they can be more successful. And it also is to give kids another option.
Sure.
You know, even if they're not going to go to college or they might not go to be an AP as a senior, if they just enjoy doing art and would like to have a portfolio and be proud of what they've made, they could take that course too.
And that was part of the appeal to me, as she pitched it to me and I, is that it really was something for everyone. It was for the hardcore AP art student who wants to go on, but also the student who just wants another art grad.
What kind, what kind of numbers are we looking at?
We haven't begun to have students sign up yet. We'll know that in the next month or two. So, and I don't have that answer tonight.
We had.
Best guess?
Sorry. We had about five students last year that were juniors that took AP art as juniors and this year they had no art class to take. And some of them came to me and asked if they could do independent studies. So there were five juniors. It would be aimed towards juniors because as seniors, they would take AP. I have two juniors in my AP course right now. So that would have been five, six, seven. And then I have some other juniors that I've spoken to that would have done this if they had the chance, that might be wanting to take AP next year as seniors, but they didn't have a chance to. So I would say eleven to fifteen. Yeah.
And you said it would be offered as, on a semester basis?
Yeah. I, I had wanted it to be a full year, but I think looking at my schedule, since I teach middle school and high school, I have to teach those eighth grade classes too. So it really only fits in a semester. It would be best to have as a full year, but yeah. We'll work it into a semester.
I think that's a good idea.
Now, from, from last year to this year, are there any other additions to the electives?
Well, the, the other course that we're proposing tonight is Basic Music Theory. And we also proposed one in previous board meeting, a phys ed elective called Mindfulness and Yoga for Life. And then other than that, there's some that run on every other year basis that are coming back this year. I don't have those memorized, but I can send those to you that are due to run this year that ran in the past. It's just their turn in the rotation.
Yeah, I definitely want to see that.
Okay, I can send you the list we have. We're sending the kids around with a list of all the courses, encouraging them to speak to their teachers, get recommendations that aren't going to be hard and fast recommendations, but at least it initiates the conversation. Teachers will sign off, they'll meet with their counselors and begin to put together their schedules. And I'll send that in.
Yes. Kim, what other elective, art electives are there for high school?
At this point, right now, I'm teaching draw and paint and AP and those are really the electives. And I think we're on an, on an on year, off year for ceramics and photography. Where I'm looking at offering an experiential art class in the future, and I propose it next year for students who really like art, but maybe they just want to experience it and have fun dabbling in things and not be required to do all those specific things that they need to for a portfolio for AP, which are really high level. So anyway, right now, it's basically, I'm sorry, draw and paint and AP and ceramics and photography. Yeah.
Any other questions about the art course or the basic music theory course? The basic music theory course hasn't changed much since it was proposed, so it kind of is as it reads.
Is that our only music elective?
Other than ensembles, which are considered electives, swing choir, and we did a history of American music this year. So this would run opposite history of American music.
A year long or a semester?
It is a year long.
Questions? We're all set? Isn't that up for your approval tonight? So you have time to sit and think and research or ask more questions if they come up. We'd be more than happy to answer. It'll be on for approval in the February meeting.
So the last thing we have is Rich and Ted here tonight. Just in case there's questions.
Yes, SEI, Rich and Ted are here tonight. If the board has any further questions later on the agenda, there's a resolution for you to approve the seeker and the nuts and bolts of the capital project and the cost and just with all of the packets and paperwork, you know, we sent to you. If there was any questions that I couldn't answer, Ted and Rich are here to, to answer those for you.
Any questions? Tim, now or? Sure. Yeah, I'd like to ask now if you've got questions.
I just wanted to double check to make sure I couldn't 100% decide if we're going to have handicapped accessible entry points to the school?
Yes.
We are?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I thought I saw something where you want to change like drop offs or something?
Yes. Part of the, part of the parking lot renovation is to change how the bus loop and the drop off and pickup off is down at the elementary. We're going to try to divide that. There's just a safety concern with how kids are coming into the elementary school where the parents are dropping off, picking up, and where the bus loop is. So there's some drawings and sketches and some ideas on how we can separate those two. With that, there's also the need to possibly have a new entrance at the elementary school off to the side of the building. Again, those aren't set in stone, but there's definitely a need to separate the two for student safety.
And I mean, do we, as far as having like for the safety and security of the students there, did we have like a physical security specialist come in and meet with you or how did we determine that?
This is really after the fact. Right now, this capital project, we're just earmarking the money for those types of projects. We don't do any sort of designs or architect layouts until after the community votes in March on the project. That comes afterwards.
Okay. So we still could have a physical security specialist come in and advise us?
We could, absolutely.
Okay. And what about the high school? Any changes here?
Renovations are to replace all the windows.
Wow.
A lot of auditorium work. We're talking about a secure, new middle, high school entrance over here. I'm sorry. Do you mean drop off or overall?
Drop off of the students, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
The drop off. We're just talking about consolidating the parking lot out front here, providing signage and actually putting additional parking spots in the back.
Okay. But where would the students enter?
Same spot they enter in the back.
Yes.
The back door?
The back.
Okay. Any thought given to having them coming through the front door?
Howard Wilson, our SRO, actually likes the idea that they are out of sight from the public when there's drop off, pickup with the amount of kids that leave the building. It's actually very secure in that back loop to have the students come in that way. So that's just.
But they're out of sight of?
Out of sight of the public view.
Right, but they're out of sight of administrators and teachers when they enter the school, right?
That's, no.
No?
There's supervision.
Oh, there is, no? Okay, that's good to hear. Is there any way we can make that more appealing to students when they enter, you know, to
We have.
To dress it up a little bit?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
All right, that's good to hear.
Yeah, because that is a very unattractive place to enter the building. We made the lobby warm and pretty and nice and the kids coming through the back door where the bathroom is, it's kind of ugly.
Yes, actually, Kim has, has started a project, if you haven't seen it, with the, with the Rachel's Challenge in the hands and some quotes and some nice painting and signage there, so it's a work in progress.
Okay. As long as we're trying to make it better.
Any other questions on that?
For the record, our parking lot is full and.
Our school basketball hasn't started.
Yeah, that's right. So when we talk about decreasing the size of the front parking lot, I'm out in East Johanga, so.
Same.
Just be aware, we do fill that big ugly parking lot a lot.
Okay. Onto the approval events. Be resolved, the minutes of the December 17 meeting be approved?
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Visitors, requests?
Nope.
Warrants, internal claims, auditor reports be resolved after audit of bills, payment of the 110 warrants and internal claims auditor reports be approved?
Submit.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Treasurers report be, be resolved, the treasurers report December 2019 be approved? Motion?
Submit.
Second.
Submit.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Second reading of two policies.
Yeah, there's no change from the policies that I provided to the board last month. Pretty self-explanatory, the school safety plans. Really, it's just a policy telling school districts that we need to upload and provide our yearly school safety plans to local law enforcement and the state by October 1st of each year. So I'll be asking for your approval once district administration reviews our safety plans over the summer. And then the leaves of absence, just extra wording regarding the three hours of paid time that employees can utilize if they need to vote. And there's some other just tiny additions in there in regards to providing leaves of absence to employees that, that requested for certain circumstances, but nothing, nothing earth shattering.
Okay, so this is our second reading. We can approve these today or we could move them to the next meeting. Are there any questions? Are we comfortable with moving forward for approval?
Yep.
Okay. We'll do one at a time. Can we get a motion to approve the policy number 5681 as is written?
Submit.
Second.
Submit.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? And a motion for policy 6550, leaves of absence, leaves of absence, you have a motion?
Submit.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Onto reports.
Um, it's right in my. It's right in my. Yep.
Yeah, it's not on there.
Sorry. Technical difficulties here. There, I shared. Here, is that okay? Shared it right now. I believe my stuff. No, it's all right. I can just put it in there. Sorry for the. Yeah, I put it in there. I don't know if you have it or what your.
Do a triple click on that link so you have it. Triple click, there you go. Right click, go to.
Thank you. Sorry, technical. So as we move forward, this is the earliest we've actually presented information to the board. And obviously, we want to keep being more and more transparent as transparent as we can. So initially, we had thought we were going to be able to give a full budget presentation, but I think it's just too soon to do that. And I think breaking it up into small pieces kind of helps everyone look at it more clearly, concisely, there's not to overwhelm, there's not the amount of detail in there. So what we're going to talk about is our budget goals for 2021, some of the external factors we're facing with this budget, and then just start going through the administrative budget, our buildings and grounds budget, and then the transportation budget. So, you can move forward. So our budget goals, we're currently looking to protect and enhance all of our core programs and all of the, the programs that we already participated in. Obviously, we want to be fiscally responsible with our taxpayer dollars and we're always looking for ways to save money or reduce and or look at what we're doing, see if we can do it better or move that money to a better spot, fund something in a different manner or a better use, so. Some of the external factors that we have going on right now, the tax cap is now permanent. That was passed last year with the governor's budget. And currently, the adjusted inflation rate we're allowed to use, it didn't get up to 2%, it's 1.81. So what does that mean? Last year, that was one of the factors that goes into our tax cap as we look at preparing that. I'm going to, I'm planning on sharing that with you at our next presentation, the tax cap, that is. I already have it prepared, but I didn't want to give too much information. We'll know more about revenue, the governor just came out with his initial budget today as we speak, so we should have our aid run tomorrow and then we can start having those discussions as well. Tax base growth factor, that's one thing we've, we've talked about certainly in the past, and that's how much growth we've had in the district for a previous amount of time. Ours is 1.0004. That means our assessed values have gone up basically nothing. So they look at, at the assessments and the growth from one year to the next year to see where they're at. And then they adjust, adjust it for this factor that you're allowed to use to grow your taxes more. So if you have lots of new houses getting put on the tax rolls, then it will increase that number, right? So we want to see that higher than stagnant because, you know, then that means people are moving into our district, potentially buying new homes. So ours is not, it's one of the lowest in the region. In fact, Byer-Virgin was the only other district that was lower and that was zero. So you can get to zero. So, so that's what we'll use for that. There's new legislation that, that they just passed about the BOSI's capital expenditure. We don't have BOSI's capital expenditures at this point. They haven't done renovations. Their, their capital amount is, is usually zero. They have leases on some of their spaces, so it'll be interesting to see how this impacts other districts in the area, so. So for now, we don't have to worry about that, but that's similar to what the capital exclusion is that we know we have that has made our tax cap negative in the past, the thing we try to avoid. And again, this year, we need to buy buses out of the general fund so that we don't have a negative cap. So if you remember the cap, just a brief description, you have what we levied last year, they look at that, they look at what you get in pilots, any change there, it reduces or increases your ability to raise taxes. And then you have this thing called the capital exclusion. So basically, if you're a school district and you need to improve your, your district, they don't want to penalize you for having to raise your taxes because you might have maintenance type procedures to do. So like, if it's going to cost you money and you're not going to get enough aid on it, they don't want to penalize you for, for being able to raise your taxes up to that amount to cover that levy. So we've had a negative one since I started, going back, the year I started, we have, we had a negative cap. So that just means our expenditures for capital items like bus purchases, anything that's big and long term that we keep over time, any of our improvements on our, on our buildings. If we're not getting as much in aid, that creates that exclusion or that amount that we're allowed to carry forward. But once you carry that forward, if you don't go up to that, it subtracts out the next year, so you have to keep a flat capital exclusion or as we're trying to do, wean that down to nothing and in a year where we have a big growth base, start to not purchase buses out of the, out of the general fund, go back to the way we were doing it before. So that's, we're just trying to improve that, keep that level until a point that we don't have to keep a level anymore because we can turn it around in other ways. There's a lot of factors in the tax cap, I don't want to get into all of them. I know that was just a little synopsis for you all of what's to come, but I think we're headed in the right direction and there's creative ways to help us not have a negative cap, so. And I think again, this year, we probably will be asking for your consideration, potentially a 1% tax levy increase. We need feedback on that. I haven't presented anything on that, but I'm guessing that's probably where we're going to be at. We don't have the full budget yet, again, so, but that's just my guess. So some other factors that are influencing us right now, health insurance, we know that is always a big cost of the district. It's roughly 10% of what the expenditures are every year. I'm expecting that to be around 5% this year. We've done really well with Genesee area health plans, so hopefully, we can keep the rate low gas and diesel fluctuations. I mean, you will all see what's going on in the news. So we just want to make sure we're constantly monitoring and protecting our budget for that. And we have the negotiation with the teachers union this year that we're working on, so. One more thing, these account codes, if you look, this is just an example, as we've discussed, the transparency and the ESSA reporting, which is the requirement for us to report building level expenditures, has caused us to increase our codes. So if you look at A2020, that's just one of them, that's the administrative salaries, supervision salaries, you'll see zero in the first column for 202150, and then you will see the actual salaries divided into building on the next two lines. So just keep that in mind. Next time I give you a report like this, I'm going to keep the headers so it'll be easier for everybody to look at, so I apologize for that, but, so that's what we're working through with this budget. So it's going to look wonky because there's going to be a lot of zeros and then items below it that are going to have items this year, but not last year or the prior year. So just keep that in mind as we, as we work forward with this. I think it's helpful also if we're presenting it in smaller chunks, that gives us the ability to look at it and put a little more clarity, so. So attachment one, this is the administrative expenses and a piece of the three-part budget's capital expenditures, which is transportation. But again, I wanted to give you all of my budget items I felt like, you know, were completely responsible with. I'm letting the instructional piece they're working on there, so we're still reviewing that and, and trying to focus on the programs and services that we want to offer, what can we keep and where we're at budget wise. So some of the highlights, in total, you'll see salary increases in here for all, that includes the administrators setting contractually, that includes my offices increases, buildings and grounds, and transportation. So collectively, that's roughly $80,000. SRO, we see an increase of $7,500. They don't actually give any what they're going, they're going to pay them, so I just estimate and go from there.
What is that on a percentage basis? Are we, what are we at now? Are we at $80,000?
That's an 8.57% increase, budget to budget, so.
I will let the board know just that we're there. I reached out to a gentleman this morning, there's something called, I guess in a nutshell, an SRO grant that's offered. I reached out to the Genesee superintendents and really, the grant needs to come from the Genesee County Sheriff's Office, they're the lead agency. So Katie Huber from Alexander and I spoke this afternoon, she's going to reach out to Bill Sharon and we're just going to put, you know, put something in his ear that we as the superintendents of this region feel the need for him to apply for this grant. I won't get into all the grant specifics, but. I won't get into all the grant specifics, but the grant could allow us to have Howard here at no cost to the district for the next three years. The grant's very competitive, obviously, but we are pursuing that as of this morning. The deadline for the grant is March 11th, but it's something that I very much feel that the districts around here need because budgets tight. The governor's budget does not shed a good light on school districts. I think money's going to be tight, and we are all concerned that what we all thought was a great thing to have unfortunately might be the first thing to go.
Will the grant allow each school district?
Yes, yes, yes.
So it'd be a county grant?
That's what we are going to sit down with, hopefully, Bill, if he's willing to do that as the lead agency. Like I said, the grant just came out last week, so looking at it and researching it, we're going to see what we can get from it. But yes, it would be basically them saying county-wide that we're using SROs to police the schools. That's part of the grant writing, and would have to come from them, but we're on board and want to make sure.
Do you have a really good grant writer?
Actually, the sheriff's office does, so.
Is that federal or state?
That's state.
State grant.
So Nicole, is that 8.5% increase from what they're, is that, was that anticipated, that percent of an increase?
So I will reach out and verify these numbers. These are all like worst-case.
They just renegotiated their contract, so a lot of its health and benefits, yeah, they just renegotiated their contract. So we've seen.
How sustainable is that if we continue to 8.5% year after year after year?
I don't think it'd be year after year. This is just now, right now.
Just to get my new stock or something along those lines? Okay. Because we didn't necessarily anticipate 8.5.
You did anticipate an increase though.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't know what the.
You anticipated an increase, we knew there would be.
A yearly increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think they presented that all over. I mean, and even.
I'm sorry, and I wasn't here during the process, so I don't, I'm sorry.
I think they, I believe they get increases every year.
So they, if they go on the same contracts that we do, it's a three-year, same like SCA.
Sure, same as us, yep.
A three-year, and usually, it's like a 2% increase each year that they would receive, or whatever they negotiated for.
Okay.
And then they'll, you know.
Re-negotiate, and then go from there.
We did anticipate each year, I know we tell, yeah.
I think, I think last year, the first number that you came out with was a fair bit higher than the actual number. You're probably erring on the side of caution with that number.
Yes, for sure. So we don't even, we don't know, we don't have the full budget put together yet, but I have items already on my list.
Sure.
You know, of things that we can look at and make any cuts on. So, and as I've told the administrators, I want to know everything they want. I'm going to put together all the salary and benefit expenditures, but I want all of their information to see where would that put us, you know, year over year, and then, and then go from there. I think we want to say what we need, but is there, are there things we can cut? What can we cut? Do we really need this? And I think we've challenged them year over year, what do you actually need as teachers to do your job? And I think they've responded, for the most part, pretty well. And I think we've still gotten them their needs when they need them. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was more concerned about the SRO.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at it.
Anticipating 8.5% increase.
It's $7,500 as a percentage of our budget, it's basically nothing. But it is, it is a scary number because that's roughly $100,000. That's, you know, that's where we love to cut when we're really under the gun cutting, like, we want to cut the big things that are easy, so, per se. So, okay, you know. Just a high-level overview of the increase for buildings and grounds budget to budget year. In the grounds, there is an expense in the equipment for a new truck and a replacement mower. The mower is roughly seven years old that we're looking to replace, and the truck is five. If we replace them on a five-year cycle, the trucks, we don't have to do the maintenance costs, the tires, all the things that keep up with that, but then we also get a revenue in from those, because Auctions International, they sell those trucks for a fair amount. Jordan was thinking between $15,000 and $20,000, so we would get that back in revenue. And then the other thing that we are looking at is, and it's coming out in the newsletter with Tara, Jordan did a write-up of the energy use we've had since we had the EPC, Energy Performance Contract, and started locking down the doors and started controlling the temperatures with the heat. We really have cut our costs for energy. So while I'm still, I don't want to lower them as much as I maybe could yet because of what's going on overseas, like, I really am looking at those as savings costs that we've had over the years. So I, they're conservative now, but you know, in the end, those are areas where we could really be maybe a little bit more conservative.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are the bugs worked out of the heating system so that there are rooms in the?
No.
I mean, are there still rooms that are 105 and still rooms that are 57, or are there?
I think there has been heating issues still, to some degree. I think there are a lot less than they were. I think we're working out the kinks of having the adjusted controls. They're better than they used to be. We've had some network failures over the last couple of months that have set us back. So if you don't all know, we control our system on a computer in Jordan's office, and he sets the set point, and it kicks on when it's supposed to at a certain time, and it kicks off, and if it gets separated from the servers, that's when we have those types of issues that you're talking about. I think it's better. I can't tell you for certain how much better, but I think it is better. And I think on a case-to-case basis, we have been dealing with issues like that, putting thermometers in people's areas to try to track it and see, and you know, if the temperature is really 70 degrees, then I don't, there's not much more we can do. If we, if we go in there and read a thermometer and it's 70 degrees every two hours or every hour or something. So we're trying to work on those case by case for anybody that's having issues. Transportation. So this year, we're looking at replacing two buses, and we have to replace two cars at least. One bus we're replacing out of the general fund, one bus we're planning on financing like we have in the past, and we're also replacing two of our small vehicles with either minivans or SUVs, and you can see the cost there. Then obviously, some of the challenges we have with our bus garage is just getting subs for our bus drivers, getting drivers. And then, as I mentioned before, monitoring fuel costs as we look at decreasing those year over year, and just being kind is that in the last five years, there have been some serious fluctuations in those.
Are we upgrading to SUVs from cars for a reason?
Safety. We have some students that are being placed out to places that take longer to drive, and you may not want to use all the gas for, using a small bus. We need more buses for cost and fuel efficient. I think safety is one of the bigger factors. It's very hard to see out of the small cars. A lot of times, there's an aide and a student in there, so it's pretty cramped. We want to make sure that, you know, obviously, safety is number one. But I think that it's hard when you're in one of those little cars to be.
I would much prefer an SUV or a truck myself, so I'm.
It's one of the rest. Yeah, but then, then we can put another, an additional student in that vehicle if necessary. We do have two students going for certain places, so it would be helpful to really have, if we need an aide in there, the two kids and an aide, and not have to take the small bus, you know, if they don't need, if it doesn't warrant that.
Do you remember what we spent on buses last year? What's going on with inflation with buses?
Those were different buses. We bought one, Josh, one bus that was full-size and one small bus, right? Yes. So we're replacing them on our replacement cycle, and this cycle, we're coming up with two buses and throwing in two SUVs and/or minivans. Jeff has been working on getting me pricing for minivans, that maybe they're out and go because they're cheaper, but, but yeah, there's not really, and we, we haggle, we always sign our contracts in November because we get, we get a discount on the undercoating or something. So we do that because we know we need to replace two of our buses. So we really went through with a fine-toothed comb and peeled out some of the expenses that we didn't think we needed, and really just haggled over them and discussed them. So I mean, 132 grand, we all, we might be getting less in trade-ins as well, so that could be a factor.
You'd extend warranty when you sign over the two.
Yes, extended warranty. So that helps us with the ten-year life of not having as much if something does happen. So the next steps at the next meeting, we're looking at the instructional presentations, which is basically going to be any new or different services. I do want to talk about enrollment as we go forward at some point, special ed. The budget, in my eyes, will be 95% complete. We have to get the tax cap completed, so we'll need to do that. And then our ESSA report is also due on March 1st, so that's where we're at in terms of that. So I'm interested to see where we land with that report and what they spit out and say to us.
Are you feeling good about this year, this spudgy year performance?
Yeah. Yeah, feeling good. Are you feeling good about this year?
Feeling all over your field.
So my point in giving you this, I want you to look at it, and I want you to ask questions if you have questions. Obviously, I'm prepared to answer any now. I really think it's hard to have a meeting, even if you're looking at it beforehand, and me going through it may have answered questions, so always feel free to email me and ask me. And then the only other thing I have on my list of things to do as you guys are thinking about this, the reserve fund plan needs to be updated, the long-range plan needs to be updated, these are things that I'm working on that, again, I'm still working on them, I just, it hasn't been a good time to give you that information, and I don't feel like you need more analysis of your lives, so. Is that all?
Any questions for Nicole?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so we're about halfway through the school year, right? So it seems like appropriate state, state-of-the-school financial situation. Between now and the end of the school year, are we in good shape if, you know, teachers need certain things between now and the end of the school year? Can we afford to accommodate them? And if we need overtime for certain things in order to accomplish the operational mission of the school, do we have overtime that we can spend to do that?
Glad you asked that. I'm giving John a memo on what I think our surplus will be, and asking him to share that with you with this Friday update. So I'm not prepared to give you all of those answers right now, but I think we will be in a good position. And I want, I'm double-checking and triple-checking what my estimations are, because I have to look and project out what I think the year-end is going to look like. So I want, before I do that, I like to, I like to do it and then sit on it, and then look back and make sure that all those numbers make sense to me. So before I give that number out to John and you all in a memo, I just want to make sure I got it.
Okay, overall, though, we're not destitute?
No.
Okay, that's good.
Tim, just so you are aware, this is the time of the year where we kind of shut down the spending for the school year moving forward. There's going to be, and I think you already sent it, Nicole, that basically, we're putting a freeze on the budget as of Valentine's Day. So if there's any outstanding requisitions that teachers need, a lot of the materials and supplies that the teachers purchase, you know, are bought over the summer, and there are things certainly that pop up throughout the year. But really, now is the time to kind of put a freeze on the budget to see, exactly what you said, to see where we are at, because there's a lot of outstanding budget items that we just need to reconcile to get, kind of get a grasp of where we're at. And certainly, if there's ever an emergency, somebody needs something, we'll never withhold that, but now is the time to see where we're at. The reason being is that it does actually roll over into next year. If we're in a pretty good spot and we know stuff that we're going to need for next year, then we'll use, if there's any surplus monies this budget year, to roll that over and purchase items that we know that we need for next year. So it's just kind of a rolling, you know, type of, you know, people call it a budget season, but budgeting is happening year-round. But now is the time that we kind of pause to take a look to see where we're at financially. And once we have those numbers, I'll share them with the board.
I mean, I know sometimes it's hard for teachers to project what's going to happen in the spring, you know, April, May, and if special events come up that our students should experience or participate in, then we certainly don't want to, you know, be handcuffed and not allow them to do that. So we want to make sure that there is money for certain things like that.
That's what I'm wondering, because by doing the budget now, most teachers at the high school level don't even know what they're going to teach next year. So they're making a budget kind of blind based on what they taught this year, and do we have that flexibility if someone got some surprise assignments? Is there flexibility from now till June for them to accommodate that?
The principals earmark money, kind of like this cap. We earmark money for supplies and materials. The teachers are not asked to give an itemized list right now of what you need. It's, like you said, it's January, but there are discussions, the teachers meet, or, excuse me, not the teachers, the principals meet with the department chairs, we take a look at what you've spent over the last couple of years, how much money you need possibly moving forward. Are there any additional things that you may need next year that you normally don't order? So all those things are taken into consideration, but you're right, we don't sit here and itemize down to the penny of what a teacher's going to need come September, because we just don't know. So we're very, we're very cautious moving forward with our budget, but those are the discussions that the building principals have, and then what that, that's what Nicole takes into consideration.
So the teachers don't have to have their itemized budget in? I thought they had to have it in before Christmas.
By, no, not until, not until, we can't order anything until July 1st.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
There are some, how we did it here in this building is, teachers were asked to itemize as best they could and justify whatever purchases they might be. In some cases, they were very specific, like I could list chemicals that our chemistry teacher knows so many. In other cases, it's more vague. For example, one English teacher signed me $1,000 for textbooks. So we asked them to be as specific as they could, so we set our budget according.
Okay.
In some cases, very specifically, which I appreciate. In other cases, it was pretty vague.
So let me get this straight. So in some school districts, especially elementary schools, they say this is what your budget is across the board. So for instance, in my district, we get $250 a classroom. That's it, no more, no less. That's our budget, and we have to have our itemized list in by yesterday.
$250 isn't very much.
That's what we get. No, it isn't, but that's what we get. How is our elementary school function?
So similar to what Matt did, we tried to stay very consistent with our processes. So some people were very detailed and descriptive, other people have the earmark money to a specific website or a specific company, depending on what they're teaching. So if you're PE staff, they know that every year they use Gopher, so they've given a specific amount that they want, but they haven't detailed yet because they don't know what balls and things they've gone through yet. So we've done the same, but in addition to that process where it's kind of like their wish list is how it's been denoted in the past, I also took the $250 per person, and that will also be added to whatever they've offered to me right now.
Is that what the range is, is 250 per classroom?
So everybody has an automatic $250 for supplies, and then if they participate in the wish list process now, it's above and beyond that $250.
So is that why on the warrants I'll read, like, there'll be purchases that don't seem, like, to me, would have been something I would have made? It seems like there are purchases that are made that would have been, in my context, would have been made in the past budget, not just kind of rolling. Like, when I would read through this warrant, I'd say, well, okay, why, why are there 60 copies of, thank you, Mr. Bulker, or whatever that is. It doesn't necessarily look to me.
Like, why are they buying it now?
Yeah, why are they buying it now, and why wasn't this already a decision made?
Because I sent out an email, it told them they had to put in all their purchases, and maybe they know that they were going to read it towards the end of the semester, or something along those.
Or even like Post-its. It's funny for me to see on a, on a warrant, like, somebody's requesting three-by-three Post-its in the middle of the year. It just seems to me like, I have no problem, if somebody wants a million Post-its, I don't care.
Right.
I'm sure they're doing something great in a literacy classroom with them, but it doesn't make, it doesn't.
That's the other argument for, from me, my standpoint, to my staff and the other administrators, if you don't have it now, what have you been doing without it, and why didn't you need it before? So we talk about these things, like you're saying. you're saying, all the time. So, why didn't they put it in the summer? Why didn't they buy it in the summer?
Or, 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 or now. I, I, as a fourth grade teacher, I know what I'm gonna need next year for the most part. And I hope that my administrator is going to say, hey, Josh, you do need this money. I've got earmarked. You can access this money for a good reason. But we have parameters that we have to work in, and two hundred and fifty is tight.
Right. Our administrative staff have actually talked a lot this, this process because there's a lot of different, what has happened in the past, what has happened in the future. I will tell you, I don't know where that two hundred and fifty dollars per teacher came from. It's, it's not...
It's weird. I, we had the same one.
And, and my philosophy on that is it really depends on what you're teaching, what grade level. I mean, the art teachers, the phys ed teachers who see every single kid all, like, they're probably going to need more. You know, I was a math teacher. I didn't need anything. And I don't wanna limit teachers to two hundred and fifty, but I also don't wanna tell a teacher, hey, look, if you only spend fifty, I'm gonna give you two fifty. Um, you know, I've used that example before of if I asked you to buy dinner for the Board of Education, here's two hundred and fifty dollars. You're gonna spend two hundred and fifty dollars. You're gonna have lobster and steak. But if I said, go buy, you know, dinner for the board, you just may come back with pizza if I don't give you any money. So, there's just philosophies to all of that. We wanna give the teachers what they need.
Right.
Absolutely. So, I'm not a big proponent on limiting it to two hundred and fifty. Honestly, I don't know where that number came from. I think it's what do you need and, you know, can we swing it? And, but again, we can't purchase anything till July 1st of the next budget year anyway.
Right.
So, it's, it's really kind of a waste of time for teachers and for us to ask for itemized lists because prices change. Yes, you're right. You don't know. And then come June, hey, you're not teaching this course, or you're gonna teach that course, but we're also gonna have you teach this elective. You may come back and say, well, to do that, I need this. Absolutely. So, there, there has to be flexibility.
Well, also, you just, the mention was made that if you've done without it thus far, why do you need it now? But this is Regent's Week, so now there's a whole bunch of new courses gonna start. So, now is when teachers might need things for the next semester.
Right.
Typically, though, they more, ninety percent of the purchasing is done in the summer. And, and I'm not, I'm not here to naysay anybody. I think that the teachers would say, I mean, I think the administrators would say, I've said no to a lot of things that, that people have asked for, but also I've said yes to a lot of things. If somebody needs something and it's emergency, if it's truly something that they need to teach that class, there's no way I'm gonna say no to it. There's no way John would ever, John would ever let me say no to it. So, and I mean, they would not, I, I trust them enough to know. They say no to things. I, I support them in that, but they also know, like, I'm gonna question that, those things. And it's not from a standpoint of anything else. If you told me that you were under a misconception and you needed to order them, by all means, you have the money in your budget or in the timeframe, please order them. I wanna make sure that you have it for your class. And I think that's the, that's really the bottom of, you know, I, I have supported and I think I've tried to find money to support for any of the necessities that we've had here and/or good programs that have been enhancing the, the students.
Okay, and then to follow up on what Tim said, and welcome back, Tim.
Thank you.
The schools, when I worked in the school here, various people have various busy and intense times, and it goes through cycles. And sometimes the coaches are really intense and sometimes the math teachers are, and sometimes the custodians are, and sometimes the administrators are. We all have those really intense crunch times. So, do we have enough money in our budget that if some of our people, our hourly staff, no matter where they are, if they need to work overtime, can they work overtime in order to get their job done? Or do they have to clock out and work for free while they get their job done? Can we afford that overtime for our hourly staff as needed?
I mean, that sounds situational to me. So, if somebody's, if somebody's...
It is situational. That's what I said.
If somebody's concerned that they're not, I leave leeway if people need overtime to do their job. I don't think that's out of the realm of possibilities, but I do think that there's some scrutiny with overtime. And if, if people are not working to their full day or there's not a need for that in the eyes of the administrator or the supervisor, then certainly they are gonna say no. And, and overtime is not a given.
Well, sure. So, I guess that's what I, I'm...
But to answer your question, the answer is also yes, that there's, there are, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Out of day-to-day operation, yes, absolutely.
One big thing I see, like, especially during the summer, when, when they're trying to get their stuff together as far as orders, is if teachers are provided or not provided, I guess their assignments in a timely fashion, if it drags into August sometimes and they're not know, they don't know what they're gonna be teaching, then there has to be flexibility to help those teachers out to get the supplies they need.
Correct. And I think moving forward, we are going to be very detailed and making sure that we communicate with the staff, hopefully before the end of the school year, let alone the last day of school, teachers are gonna know what they're, what they're gonna be teaching and what assignments they're gonna have.
I think that would help out a lot.
Absolutely. I fully agree.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sorry for that. I just couldn't. I, I, I look at these and I can't line them up always. Yeah.
Okay, John?
Just one quick item that I sent to the board in regards to the draft of the twenty twenty-one instructional calendar. I just wanted to clarify and maybe answer any questions. The calendar will be up for board approval in February, but this calendar for the next school year lends some concerns. I did sit down with the GVEP superintendents and I also attended the GVEP calendar creation and, and discussion. If you aren't aware, Labor Day is very late next year. And if we continued like we did this past year where we have a superintendent's conference day the Thursday before Labor Day, we have our kickoff on Tuesday, the kids would come to school on Wednesday. That's the eighth next year. And that's, that's very late. So, in looking when the Thanksgiving break falls, obviously having that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off, when the December break falls and when Easter falls, there's a concern that there aren't enough days. And what do I mean by not enough days? The, the winter break, we would have to go right through to the twenty-third. The April break would be the week of March twenty-ninth through April second, which is the week before Easter. And we'd have to return that Monday. And we'd also only have a three-day memorial weekend. So, there were some thoughts and discussions from the GVEP consortium on getting some days back. There were some surveys that went out. And I threw a survey out to our district staff that if I could end up really getting three days back, where could I get those from and, and what could I do to play around? Because that would really force our hand of, of having the Easter break that early in March. So, the consensus, over ninety percent of, of the district staff, was in favor of me shortening the February break. That we would have Monday off of the President's Day. I would have Tuesday off as well, so there would still be a four-day weekend. I've actually scheduled more so for the students and families, a superintendent conference day on that Wednesday. So, at least the kids themselves would have a five-day weekend of, of the February break. But that, we as, as a staff would return for that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That would allow me to have three days to work with. Therefore, I could put December twenty-third off, which I know people like and, and like to have that extra time before Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. It would allow me then to have that Monday off after Easter because, you know, people travel. And unfortunately, I wanted that week, I'd rather have Good Friday off and the week after Easter off. But I do have to align with the GVEP calendar and they are doing it that last week in March. And then that would also allow me to devise a four-day memorial weekend. So, that's the draft of the calendar that I have in front of you. It just, like I said, it would eliminate the February break for the staff by three days and just by the kids by two. So, that might be, I don't know if there's any questions or in the next few weeks, if you have questions regarding that. But I think this is a pretty sound, you know, instructional calendar for next year and it aligns with the GVEP calendar and...
I have a question.
Sure.
It's, well, you haven't been here a little bit. I've never, um, how do I say this? In the past, we had a superintendent come to Oakville, Alabama, who, I don't think the word despised is too strong, despised having a break around Easter time and instead wanted a full week off in February and made it his goal to create that. And I always, being a resident of the district as well as an employee of the district, always wondered why that was, I guess, imposed on the district? Because in listening to my students discuss it, most of them don't have a break. It's mostly educational people that have a break in February. And they all, for the most part, said their families would prefer to have a longer Easter break and not have that February break. So, that's why I wonder why, are, are we forced to have that February break? It doesn't seem like, I mean, kind of as a teacher, I would have, a high school teacher, I would have preferred to have a whole month without interruption, maybe now that it...
Really, the answer to that is it really does revolve around the, the GVEP calendar for BOSEs. GVEP is taking a full February break. The problem that comes in is when we're in session and they are not, what do we do with our kids that go to BOSEs? And if they're in session and we're not, then those kids lose out. So, you know, again, I was very much a proponent of having Good Friday off, having the Easter weekend and having the week after. It just allows for a little more travel time.
I think that's what the taxpayers would prefer.
Right. The problem is, is that GVEP has it the week before. They have the week of Good Friday off and they're going back to school on Monday. Listening to, you know, concerns and talking to a couple of kids, and like I said, I had sent out that email to our district staff, you know, having Easter and coming back that Monday morning is, is tough. So, I have to follow what the GVEP calendar really for that break. And then we're, you know, you know, if, if we don't have this mid-winter February break, it buys me a day that we could have that Monday off. So, at least it's, you know, an extra day for travel and for people to, you know, get ready back to school.
I think that's a good idea. I just, that's always been my concern is we work and the taxpayers dine. And it seems to me like it would be good if we met the needs and desires of our, the people who pay us, if we could pay more attention to that in making this schedule.
I think, though, this is an add to that. And I, and I think unfortunately we're bound, though, to, to, to BOSEs.
That, and, and some of the teacher...
It's the same, it's the same, I think it's for all schools. We were just talking about this at, at, in my district and it's, I agree with what you're saying.
True. Yeah, it just showed up six, eight years ago.
Well, it was a little longer than that because...
And, and actually, the initial, the initial idea was that it's gonna save school districts money by not heating the building during the coldest time of the year for a week. That's, that's really where it came from. And I think districts, depending on where you are, are starting to, you know, either agree with it or not. There are, there are school districts that don't have a break at all and have a week, a week and a half at the, at the April break. So...
That was just a concern. I, I've always wondered if that's what our district taxpayers would prefer. I, I appreciate that you have worked to make it as best you can by satisfying GVEP and making it what taxpayers in our school district would prefer.
Right. And, and some of this is you are, you are bound by some contracts. I have to give Good Friday off for some of the contracts. So, does that, does that mean then that February break, or, sorry, that April break, the Easter break, does it need to be the week of Good Friday? No, but if it's the following week, then I have to give that Friday off, so, so I lose a day. So, there's a lot of, you know, give and take when it comes to trying to figure all this out.
Well, Good Friday is a religious holiday, so if you, for a large number of people. So, you might lose so much money if you didn't give it off just because people are allowed to take that kind of...
Right. But there are school districts that, that are only given that week after. They don't give Good Friday off. We have the day before Thanksgiving. Most districts don't have that. So, so there's just a lot of constraints when you're trying to get the number of days in here to work. And like I said, if, if I kept the February break the way it was, then our April break would be shorter. We'd have a three-day weekend and for Memorial Day, we'd go right up through the twenty-third. And I just know, you know, sometimes when you're used to that, there's, you know, and...
Well, it's what they prefer and they pay our salaries, so that's what we should try to do.
Yeah, so...
Which I appreciate that you've done.
So, this is, this is the calendar. It has the right amount of days. We end on that June twenty-sixth with a, sorry, June twenty-fifth, which is another superintendent day. That's the rating day. So, it, so it adds up. I do know some districts are going before Labor Day, which really isn't an option here. And so...
I think that's a traditional holiday and you might have such a high absenteeism on Labor Day that it wouldn't be a good idea anyway, you know, to go before Labor Day.
No, and, you know, and I think the, you know, the teachers need a day to work in their rooms and then we need a day to, you know, celebrate what we're doing here and kick it off and, and talk about board goals and, and our mission for the year. So, you know, it works out. But like I said, and next year's calendar is, is gonna be completely different because Labor Day will be early. It just, we, we actually start four days late. We started on the fourth this year. So...
Okay. Any other questions for John?
But I'll leave that for you. It'll be on the agenda to approve at the February meeting. And if you have any other issues, you know, concerns or, or feedback, please let me know.
Is there anything else that John has had?
That's it.
Okay. Let's see. Moving on to new business, sphere of resolution, items ten-two through ten-six be approved via consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Capital improvements Project 2020, secret resolution. Need, um, what's that? Secret resolution. Yep, so, eleven point one, resolution issuing seeker negative declaration for proposed capital improvements project. With a motion.
No moves.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Eleven point two, resolution is to special district meeting vote. This'll be a resolution to essentially move the capital project forward to vote for the community. Can we have a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Just for the, the meeting and the vote, that was from...
This is to move it forward.
Move it forward. That was one of the time period that they gave. So, from eleven to eight?
Yes. So, this is setting everything in stone. It's a fifteen-point-three million-dollar capital project.
Yep, I got that part. Just the parameters in which they could vote. It was on the fifteenth, yep.
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth from eleven to eight.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
I'm fine with that. I, I like those times. It's not that anybody cares, but I, I thought it was a good time.
Do you wanna vote, Ray?
Yeah.
There's only six votes.
Yeah, right.
Any other discussion? We're moving that forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. That was a long. Communications, I think just what we've got here. Discussion roundtable. So, we've got a couple of things here. The first is, thanks, guys. The first is the proposed HPV vaccination legislation that the state is considering. We're considering ourselves a issue of a letter to the state asking that they not move forward with that legislation. Do you wanna speak to that letter a bit?
Sure. So, there is legislation, and I was reading it up, you know, this past weekend, over the weekend. I do not think it has any sort of legs to, to really take off and run. But there's legislation up there that they are considering in making the HPV vaccination along with the flu shot a mandatory immunization that kids need to attend public schools. There's been a lot of back and forth on this. There's been a lot of back and forth on this. School districts are kind of laying low as far as coming out with a, with any sort of, of statement. The few that have certainly oppose it. And I think right now, it's, 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 it's there, but there's also eight to 10 other, other ones. For some reason, this just has a little more focus to it. I think it's just curtailing the no more religious exemptions for immunizations. And then you throw in, oh, and we're gonna make two more mandatory. I think that's where it got its, its focus and now it's on the hot seat. So I know there was, you know, some questions from the board. I have not really received anything from the community as far as, as a stance or, or my thoughts or feelings. But school districts have written letters to their assemblymen, to Governor Cuomo, to take a stance and, and not have this thing pass. So really, you know, I spoke with Matt. That is something that I can certainly do. But that really can't come for me. If, if the board wants to take a, a stance that you oppose this legislation, I can certainly write letters, the board can sign off. And I can, you know, mail those letters and send them off. We could also post that letter on the website. But really, it would be something that the board would have to decide upon as, as it is, you know, of a political nature, so...
Letters along the lines of the one that you sent to us?
Just some examples, yep, yep.
So that was specific to HPV, not necessarily the flu shot, right?
Correct, yes.
So you were mentioning the flu vaccine, but we're really just talking about...
About the HPV, yes. So, you know, I can tailor a letter. I could have that to you by the end of the week if the board decides that they want me to reach out and, and send those to our assemblymen and Governor Cuomo. We could post it on the website or...
I would like you to do that.
I'm sorry?
I would like you to do that.
I, I agree. I, I, what you have already sent us, I liked. And I thought it was very to the point. And clearly stated what our stance is. And I'd like the rest of the community to understand. It's kind of where we, where we are.
I think the non-airborne nature of, you know, the HPV discussion is, makes it less of a health risk to the school and to the corner that our students need this before they enter the doors of our school. They're not without physical contact, putting other students at risk. I don't know if the state cares what we've got to say, but I guess we can say what we wanna say. So yeah, I would support sending that letter also.
Yeah, I would too. So is the HPV and the flu shot, are these sort of married together? Or is it two separate?
At one time, they were, they were married together. But I think the flu part of it kind of went away and it's all about the HPV.
Gotcha. Sort of let the flu one sit on it?
And I think it takes two separate because, you know, it is easier to get the flu.
Well, right.
The whole, like, like Matt said, the HPV is kind of in a whole separate classification.
You and I would be in the same room together and share the flu versus...
Right. Yeah, exactly. So I'm out of the office tomorrow and Thursday, but I can get that letter to you Friday.
I did see it, I think I was able to open it.
Okay, but I'll redo it on the letter pad and, and I'll have you guys once, you know, once over it before I send it.
I mean, even our gym right now, right? There's a game going on and so it's full of people that aren't vaccinated for the flu and they may or may not be. So all of our students, I mean, the whole building's contaminated with it. So to, to force people, I, I just think that it would be good if we defended our community against any more mandates that are not necessary.
Yeah, if it came to it, I'd be, I'd be for not mandating the flu shot. So is this me, that's why?
Is this letter, is this letter gonna be specific to HPV or flu? I think the HPV, we're on safer grounds.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I think it...
So let's just hold it to that.
Okay, I'll get that letter to you Friday morning. I'll have you, if you wanna do a quick once-over and give you the thumbs up and I'll mail it out. I'll just tweak a couple of things. And then if you want me to, with your blessing, if everybody's okay, I'll also post it to our website.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, and the second item is gonna be discussion regarding enrollment increases that have occurred in our kindergarten class and staffing changes that are gonna make, probably wanna kick this off.
Lynn provided me, currently based on your request of kind of where we're at and how did we get to this point. So she did a nice job outlining it. So at the end of last year, the UPK enrollment was 54. Over the summer, you have students coming and going. Towards the end of August, we were at 58. And so having three sections allowed us to have classes that were under 20, which at that point, we thought was very appropriate. And that also included an additional sped teacher. And then open school, and I will, I will tell you, the number of kids that come and go with a week left of the summer is, is quite amazing. And I'm sure you've, you've lifted. So we did begin school with 61 students. Again, we were okay, three sections. We had 20, 20, and 21. And you can see, you know, the support they had. And then over the course of October, November, December, January, we now sit at 65, which now the classes are at 22, 22, 21. Due to that, and Lynn may speak more to this, there, there was a need. She was, she was concerned and, you know, I was too. So we sat down and kind of put our heads together and she was able to provide additional support to those three classrooms. Certainly having, you know, 22 students in a kindergarten class is not something that I wanna see. But at the time, we provided extra supports and that's where we're at.
So still three classes?
Three sections, correct.
And what do they have for support in these classes?
The very last page breaks down your minutes, right?
Yes. The one, the one change that we did make, that Lynn did make towards December, actually in November, was we did have an aide and we did change it to a teaching assistant. The difference between a teaching assistant and a teacher aide is a teaching assistant has the certification to instruct students, to work with students. And so that provided additional support to some of the younger kids who came to us, you know, new and inexperienced. Some of these students are coming from out of state and...
So we have a TA in only one, one of the three classrooms, right?
Correct.
So I do have her schedule. I didn't, I didn't share it with you all directly, but the teachers and I had a conversation about how to best utilize Nancy Scroger as the TA assigned to that grade level. The four of them sat down, Nancy was a part of those conversations. They really looked at the student data and disseminated which ones really needed our support. Like we said, we had a couple of students that had never been to school before. We had some students that came to us out of state and we had some students that are just struggling. They're not classified yet. We're on that, that path of do we need to look further into that? So they were able to take eight students from three, all three classrooms. They took their data and they divided it up to say, these kids have similar deficits, these kids have similar areas of growth. And she's pulling out small groups throughout the day in addition to pushing into the classroom. So that was how the team felt it was best to utilize her, knowing that some of the students came in from out of state that had never had a foundations program and they wanted to start that program from the beginning to really get them caught up to where they needed. Also knowing that we had students that are six that have never attended school. And so this is all very new to them.
How's it looking out?
The, the TA is working out beautifully. It's really nice for them to be pulled out. They're able to take their time. She can reteach, she can preteach. So it's really giving those kids a lot of confidence to go into the classroom. You know, we're still working on some of the behavioral concerns. One student in particular, I shared a little bit more detail with John that I didn't wanna publicly share, but we do have a plan for that, that I know John will share with you if he already hasn't. But it's, it's something that every day I fingers and toes cross that there's not another kindergarten student that comes in. But my teachers and my, my faculty have done a really nice job of working within our flexible thinking and really trying to meet the needs of our students at this point in their school year.
What do you anticipate for next year's, these kids move to first as far as sections? You think we're gonna need to add a teacher? Are you gonna reshuffle things?
Yes, most likely we'll be reshuffling.
Reshuffling, so...
We are collecting data right now. We're starting the UPK kindergarten registration. We're putting it out in the newspaper. We're putting it out on our newsletters to really try to collect that information as soon as possible. That gives me a better handle on numbers for next year. Right now, we have 44 students in UPK coming into that kindergarten in UPK for next year. It's very early in the stage. I have 19 students, parents that have requested the packets. So we're still trying to gather that information for next year at this point. But I do think we have some flexibility to move somebody up into that first grade, to have a fourth section of first grade at this point for this group of students.
So we don't necessarily need to budget for another teacher in the elementary school for next year at this point, based on this...
If we're gonna replace, Mrs. Schultz is retiring. We are gonna replace her to maintain that section of third grade. Right now, I have four sections of second grade. Some of their numbers are actually dwindling. So I do have some ideas of creative thinking that I've been sharing with Admin. Donnell, Becky and I have had some conversations regarding specialized students. So some ideas are constantly churning to be ahead of this for next year. I'm just not in a state where I can really share a lot of the detail at this point.
Sure, okay.
My concern back in September was that we had large kindergarten classes. And I know that compared to a city school, they're not large. But in my capacity as an ESL teacher, having pushed in several years in the kindergarten, when you have, I mean, kindergartners are tiny little people just learning things. And when the classes are 15 or 16, the teachers just humanly can do a much better job. And then when, because of the district that we are, we often get students who haven't been to school and lack a lot of skills. And I would like to see, if at all possible, if we're not destitute, if we can spare the money, I would like not to see 20 kids in a kindergarten class in September and then it balloons like this. And I'm sure everybody's coping as best they can and doing the best they can, which I appreciate. And putting Nancy Scroger in and aides, and I certainly support that and would support us grounding money somewhere to hire more if we need any more. But I would like us not to have 20 or 21 kids in September, next year.
I took a poll this afternoon of the school districts and the 12, 13 that replied to me, the average is about 16. You're right, so we're, we are on the high end.
And in the past, that's what it was and that's what those very experienced kindergarten teachers said was effective. Especially when you have, sometimes you just get a group of extremely needy, deprived kids mixed in, you know that, and...
Did those school districts reach out with, I mean, 'cause I see one of our classes has two certified teachers in it. I mean, with that, like one teacher per...
They did not ask me if, or I did not ask them if they were providing additional support. I just said, what is your average class size of your kindergarten sections? So, you know, the tough thing is, and, and I will, I will tell the board that, you know, we're gonna keep track of these numbers, obviously for the rest of the school year and into the summer. If there is ever a need where, okay, you know, here's an issue. Like I said, back, back in August, these, these four kids that came in were right at the end of August. By the time, we would have asked you for an extra teacher. And so we figured, okay, at 58, we're okay. That's, you know, a section of 20 and a couple, you know, 19s. I could, I could live with that. We're, we're okay. While it is on the higher side, we're okay. And then unfortunately, we've just kind of ballooned up and, you know...
I mean, we have conversations of declining enrollment, so this is a bad, this is a bad problem to have.
I will tell you, our enrollment is...
This is a good problem to have.
I've sat on the other side of this meeting, like, where the heck are the kids going? This isn't really a bad problem to have. It's only, either, you know, it's lucky to draw that this is where they landed or they're coming here for a reason and...
This is the place to be, so...
Either way, you know, I gotta look at it as, but yeah, I mean, obviously, some of them are probably a transient population and we have no idea where they'll be next September. You know, but I mean, you know, whatever, you can reach out probably by the end of the year and say, hey, you can plan on staying here. And, you know, and then, you know, gives us a better idea, I guess, but...
I just think we wanna be cautious for a lot of reasons. This is definitely a foundational grade level. And if the foundation isn't there, we're gonna be scratching our chins coming third and fourth grade assessments and saying, well, why aren't they performing? We don't wanna look back at this time and say, well, we didn't support them with the best of our ability. So I think it's really important that we have the support in here and that we make sure that those kindergarten teachers feel validated and positive and support. Because this is a daunting day for these, these people. It's a hard, hard, hard day. And let alone go to the bathroom once a day, having to, to face these kids is, is, is a challenge. And I, you said foundations is what you're, is the program you're using right now?
It's part of the...
The phonemic awareness? Yeah, and, and that's a very incremental... What percentage of the kids do you feel are getting, getting this foundations program right now? And, or how many kids do you suppose out of the 62? 'Cause it's, that's a time-consuming tier for...
Everybody's getting the foundations. UPK through first grade. And then our goal is to expand and bring that up to second and third grade as well. Because one of the things that we're identifying through our curriculum audits is that the teachers have said, and they're correct, that Lucy Cockens reading and writing, the, the reading program doesn't have a solid foundation, a solid phonics piece. And so right now, looking at all of our curriculum resources and working with GVEP, we're trying to figure out what our five balanced literacy is going to be, what our non-negotiables are gonna be, what the teachers wanna see when we talk about balanced literacy for the Oakfield program, what that looks like. Foundations is one that they're very drawn to. They're, they like it. It has the handwriting, it has the spelling, it has the phonics. So it really gives us a great base and for...
And then that translates through over to words that are way, is what you're looking at? You feel like that's a good fit?
We are probably going to remove words that are way from our processes. It's just not meeting our students' needs. And we have such a wide range of needs within the classroom that the teachers are drowning with the prep and the processes. So that's something that, it's great for some districts. It's not great for Oakfield. And we're willing to say, we tried, it's not working, we're moving on. And foundations has been something that does bring in the spelling to the patterns that they're, they're learning currently. So that tie seems very natural for our teachers and for our students.
So then for, right now, kindergarten should be looking at a final assessment in the next couple of months? Or do you wait until the end of the year to, to assess where they're at?
They have started. Some of the kids that are ready have started. Some of the kids that aren't, that I'd give them that leeway to see, you know, what they can handle along with their interim assessments, along with any of the I-RAT-y data.
Because I guess that's the curious piece right here, is are we going to have them where they need to be? I think you're looking at a D or an E at the end of kindergarten to have them to be there as readers. And if they're not, how are we gonna provide RTI that's going to get them to where they need to be? And that's, that's what scares me when I see these numbers. It's, it's a very, very hard... And if they're not coming out of kindergarten somewhere at a D, first grade's gonna be a beast. And then it's just gonna trickle all the way through.
We did have really positive data conversations with first grade teachers with the kindergarten kids they received this year, our current first grade, because they did have that year of foundations under their belt. Our first grade teachers were able to get through a lot more already this year because they came in with that art, that foundation already. Which is why I'm pushing for second grade and third grade to continue with this program and expand it up, because that will give them that whole chunk of time, that program is that appropriately, and then it becomes reliable for our students.
If, if next August, this coming August, we're in this fifty-eight range and starting here, I would, if the numbers lady says we can squeeze it out, I would like to make four classes going into it, because it's such a crucial year. Such a crucial basis. You know, it was a long time since I was in kindergarten when I started pushing in with ESL kindergarten. And I was, you know, I never knew how I learned all those things until I had my mind refreshed by being around kindergarten teachers. They're awesome, there's so much to learn. Kindergarten, little tiny people are required and pushed to learn so much. And it's certainly easier to do it in a group of fifteen or sixteen, even the luxury of twelve, if some of them took off and went somewhere, than in a class of twenty or twenty-two. So, just, my vote would be, if we can squeeze it out in August or September, if we have fifty-eight potential students moving up to sixteen, let's divide it then into four classes.
What's your pre-K now? Did you, you said that problem?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, and?
We try to estimate about ten over the summers that come in or that didn't participate with our UPK program that are coming into kindergarten, which is why we start now and really try to recruit, so we have a better handle on what that might look like.
Are there private preschools that still feed students into the district?
Not as many, but yes. You also have some families that are able to, for their OAT contract, they are bringing kids in. Sometimes they'll start at a home district, at an inner school, but for kindergarten, they choose to come. So, I mean, they may not have them in UPK yet, but they may come for kindergarten, you know, for scheduling.
So, we'd already be up to fifty-four if your estimate of ten is accurate?
That's probably where I think we'll land by June, is my guess.
I feel like we're generous as a board, as we sit here and say, we wanna give the teachers this, we wanna give our buildings that, but the bottom line is, you know, it's a revenue package. You know, part of it comes from, of course, the taxpayers, part of it comes from the state. Today, the governor's talking about how he's gonna make up a six billion dollar state shortfall. So, we all wanna give everybody everything, but the bottom line is, this all has to work within a given revenue package.
That's what I said, it's not giving the teachers, it's giving five-year-olds this.
Somebody else in another corner of this school district has to be taken from.
Yeah.
So, it's noted, and when the summer comes, and we have our meetings in July and August, I'll keep the boards, you know, up to date, and from the numbers that we have, I'll say, Lynn, how many sections of UPK, K, first, second, third, fourth? Here are the numbers.
If we can't afford a teacher, could we then look at hiring teaching assistants or to fill the need in these?
We'll, yeah, we'll cross that bridge.
So, a budget will be passed by that point, of course, right, for that coming year?
But, right, but...
But then, within those dollars, if we're saying we wanna allocate more dollars in direction that we didn't allocate, you know, as we pass this budget, then we're gonna have to figure out where it's gonna come from.
But it would be money well spent. The more money put into kindergarten, the less money you're gonna have in RTI or AS, IAS services or whatever else down the road, that's the...
I don't dispute that, but you're gonna have, you're gonna have to take it from somebody.
I agree, I agree.
And all I can do is just keep the board apprised of where we're at moving into next school year.
And my goal is not to hire a teacher in August, so let's try and get that in, like, July. August hiring is really difficult.
The other concern, I don't know, you know, the conversation that Lynn and even Connie and I had too was, you know, let's say four more kids come into kindergarten. Now, we did put a sign out, said they were closed, no joke. But if we do have some more kindergarten kids come in, you know, okay, do you disrupt a kindergartner's class routines, teacher, and create a section now where you're pulling six kids from this class, six kids from this class, six kids from that class? That could have a negative effect on kids as well, especially in, you know, February and March. So, that was one thing that we did talk about, you know. Are we okay? Yeah, you give me one or two more, and we're really gonna have a, you know, really gonna have to discuss. But, you know, those were the types of things. So, Lynn was very good in providing the supports that she could and moving some people around, you know, to kind of, you know, lighten the load a little bit, you know, not that it's light, but just, you know, to provide that extra support, so. But, yeah, a few more, and I'd be, I'd be very concerned.
I have a question about that. Now, the support people that we've put in there, are those new hires that are working in there? Or are they just people that are already in existence?
Already in existence, and I can't tell you the shuffling that you did, but...
So, at the end of the school year, there were some aides that didn't have any mandated caseloads through the CSC process. And that was where I was able to put those aides in those classrooms to provide support. So, there are, they've been like a one-to-one aide or a classroom aide prior to this year. And this year, that wasn't something that we required. So, they were able to push in and support the teachers and the students with small group work, helping for teachers, so a variety of things they're able to, to be able to do for those teachers at this point.
Okay, so with them, with them being reassigned into kindergarten, that's not any kind of detriment to where they were?
No, because we had, we've had a couple of students that have gone out of district for placement, so that has alleviated some of that one-to-one aide. We had some students move up to the sixth grade that we didn't have to have an aide follow. So, we were able to provide some aide support, but we did not take away any IEP or 504 services as a result. Okay, yes.
Just so I know this, one more question. For these kindergarten teachers who, when their class goes to lunch, do the kindergarten teachers still need to, out of their own lunch hours, take the kids to the cafeteria, stand there while each one goes through the line and puts in their number, and then...
No, they're very independent, the students are very independent through the lunch line.
But the teacher still has to go with the class to the cafeteria?
They drop the kids off, once the kids get into line, they go to their lunch. Then there are aides in the cafeteria supervising. The cafeteria faculty has been really good with the numbers and helping them memorize their numbers in a quick fashion to get them through the line faster. It's working out quite nicely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
No, thanks for the support, the aide support in the classroom, that's huge, yeah.
Yep, thank you for that. Okay, subcommittee reports, has there been anything?
We, no one is a subcommittee member, no.
Maybe over the summer.
It'd be maybe like an annual thing.
Yeah, 'cause I signed up for that committee, I don't feel like we've done a lot of...
So, the health and wellness committee met, but I, the doctor's appointment, so the whole problem could update you more?
You weren't feeling healthy.
Yeah, we met January sixteenth. Lynette Crawford, the Genesee Area Health Plan Administrator, that's our health consortium, she came and talked to us about things she can do for a healthy day or just to help increase the awareness of one's health and what the health plan has to offer for the staff here, which was really positive. She had sent us out some information. Melissa DeMoy is now our wellness champion. She volunteered on behalf of our district to do that. And basically, we have money through our health insurance to put on, sponsor healthy events. So, one thing that we started, and we sent an email out, you could participate in a ten-day whole-plant-food challenge. So, anybody that wanted to participate in that got a recipe book and some supports and emails. And they started, and every day you get an email about it, and so it's for ten days. But those are the types of things that they offer to districts. Little note cards with positive, healthy information on them, calendars, the ability to come sit with us, they can reach to Wegmans and have them come in. There's a list of classes they can teach. On a professional development day, as a lot of districts have found, they're doing a health and wellness day for their staff, where we can have people come in, chair massages, we can have them teach a cooking class. But at the bare minimum, she can come in and discuss with them any parts of the health consortium. So, I think that took up the majority of the time. Some other updates, we had Mrs. Grazio plans coming up to do intermurals with the sixth graders from two forty-five to three fifteen in the middle-high gym. First day she had eight students, and then the following day she had eleven students. Each month, she's focusing on a different sport and activity. She wants, she's trying to get more kids involved, I don't think a lot of them know about it. Something we just started as she offered to do it, 'cause there's nothing really for the sixth grade to do. There's modified seventh and eighth sports, but nothing right after school for those sixth graders. So, we're trying to get the word out there that that's happening on certain days that she has available. So, that's good. We're working on a map. Sometimes people, when they come to the district, they wanna walk the halls around there. We kind of wanna tell them where we want them to walk. You know, we don't want them over in the end of the hall, by themselves in the time period. So, I bet Mr. Bueller is gonna give me the, he already gave it to me several times, just verbally, but I keep forgetting to write it down, how much it's gonna take to get a mile when you walk around the outside of our gym, that one corridor there? And then some other, he's gonna give me some other maps with mileages on them around the district that we can have available for them, the community members, when they come in. If it is a nice day and they decide that they would wanna walk or run outside, so we're working on that. Denise Glidden has offered yoga again for the next eight weeks, I believe, on Mondays. So, that'll be starting this following Monday, so she'll be offering that. Where, I mean, I think she had thirty people sign up in the middle-high and twenty people in the elementary school, so that's really awesome. Very gracious of her. So, one thing, Melissa DeMoy and I kind of head up the group, and we're working on ways to try to get more attendance. We really changed the meetings up after school. So, we're working on changing them to, we're gonna, we're gonna meet every month, and we're also, we're gonna meet in the mornings one month, and then the afternoons in the next month, just so we can hit both buildings in their timeframe there. Really look forward to either coming in early or staying a little late. Most people don't wanna stay till three forty-five from the middle-high. Most people don't wanna come in at seven at the elementary. So, we're trying to get more participation and just increase the people that wanna be part of it, so. So, those are the things we're working on right now.
There's a vacancy on the safety committee. Tim, do you have any interest in the safety committee?
Yeah, I'll do it.
You bear up your ale.
Just, it just depends, you know.
We'll sign you up, hopefully.
Yeah, if I can make it, I'll make it.
Okay. On the SOR, Justin, just answered your question. So, in the summertime, last year, we did, Jeff was on, we did a community meeting. I thought that went really well, right?
It did, people expressed some of, you know, what was out in the community, be it accurate, inaccurate, but it was out there, you know, and I think we were able to hear some things that, you know, you hear rumor of, but nobody really verbalizes it, so I thought they have a handle.
That seems like it's on an annual kind of...
Yeah, that was the first time we'd ever done anything like that.
We did that immediately prior to meeting with Elba and, like, the official SOR meeting. So, to hear from the community, you know, it kind of got back to us at the community, like, a little more input. So, to hear from the community on what is working and not working in the SOR agreement, and then from there, having the actual SOR committee meeting with Elba, and then bring that information back to the board here, whatever changes.
I just wanna make sure I'm not missing a meeting.
You're not, you're not. So, once a year, summertime, get ready.
He'll let you know.
I think that's it for there, right, for committees? On the personnel, the resolved items fourteen-two to fourteen-seven, do approve via consent, would you have that?
Seven.
Seven, seven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? No need for executive session tonight. Closing remarks. Laura, do you have any closing remarks? Jeff?
Thanks for the opportunity to come back, help you guys out. Thanks for coming back.
Thanks for coming back.
John?
I'm good.
I'm good. Justin? Okay, Tim?
How are you? Honestly, we touched a little bit on the SRO. As far as the district cost, that's probably one of our most expensive costs. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah, it's a high cost for us.
It's a high cost?
For a single one item person.
Item, right?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know whatever happened, but as far as I'm concerned, how do we know how effective this position is if we're unable to evaluate this person in his performance? So, I had the opportunity to reach out to this organization that put together school resource, performance-based evaluation in resource guide, and talked a little bit with them. And, you know, I felt kind of foolish, because they said, well, yeah, I mean, how else would your school district know whether to keep funding that position if you don't evaluate that person? So, we talked a little bit, and I jotted down, kind of like a sample evaluation form, nothing great, nothing spectacular, but hopefully something that can be built upon. You know, we got, you know, his officer appearance, officer attitude, knowledge of his job, report writing, you know, communication, interpersonal communication skills. Different key items that I would think we would want to know, because if the person's not doing the job or not up to our standards, then either the person needs to be replaced, or we need to retool or something. So, I'll pass this round, people can look at it, but I really think that we need to be able to evaluate this person. That's one. Two, I was just wondering, I know I had some parents and students talk to me when I was off about breakfast in the morning. I don't know if there's still a problem, or if every student who wants to come in off the buses and have breakfast is afforded that opportunity. I was told that they would come in, and then, because the lines were so long, you know, they would, you know, go in and sit in the cafeteria to wait till the lines kind of got down, and then, you know, go get in line. But then they were shooed out of the cafeteria, back on the buses, because they said, you know, if you're not gonna be in line, then, you know, you gotta go back on the bus. So, I just wanna make sure that we have appropriate staffing and that, that things are flowing well there for every student to get breakfast, can get breakfast.
We, Matt Peterson, the high school administration, along with Howard, myself, we kind of reviewed, we had to tweak some of the opening day. We had students on the bus, we were holding kids on the bus, we were letting kids off the bus to go to breakfast. Currently, right now, I think the plan is working fantastic. I have never heard of, and Matt probably can speak more to this than I can, but...
Anytime you make a change like that midstream, what we saw initially was, a lot of students got off the bus. Quite frankly, the cafeteria could barely hold them all. What has happened since is we've realized, well, we've said to kids is, we're gonna give you some flexibility, but we're gonna ask, if we get too full, if you're not eating breakfast, to stay on the bus. And they have complied. We also made another subtle change. Kids would come in the front door, go into the cafeteria. We thought that might be one good holding place for everybody. Well, the kids who come in the front door by lunch don't get breakfast. So, what we've allowed the kids who come in the front door to do, it's a healthy number of, it's probably thirty-five to forty. They'll sit in this front lobby, we have, that's just, that's what they want. So, the cafeteria, in my opinion, the changes we made down there, it's running smooth now. There's plenty of room, the lines to get breakfast is reasonable, so I'm pleased with where it's at.
But what is the staffing in the cafeteria, servers and things like that, cashiers?
We have two staff assigned to the cafeteria during breakfast, in addition to the server and the cashier.
How many cashiers are there?
Just one. Oh, there's two lines?
Two lines, one cashier.
It was just only one cashier, so it doesn't matter if there's two lines?
But the lines, they obviously have, like, someone who observed the breakfast serving. It's running smoothly, the kids who wanna eat are eating. And by seven-thirty, there isn't anyone left in that cafeteria, still wanting more time to eat.
And there's only one cashier at lunch. I mean, they've...
Well, there's only one cashier to serve, right?
Yeah.
But there's two lines, because as one leaves, you're almost putting in a pin to pop up, so she just goes back... But there's two lines, because if one leaves, you're always putting in a pen to pop up, so she just goes back and forth.
It was set up to be two cash registers, because they took out the outside line. And I know that I've proctored lunch periods where, when the last student got through the line, it was seven minutes before the end of the class period. And that wasn't once in a while, that was every day for an entire year. So it's not like, it wouldn't flow better in some of those large lunch periods if there were two cash registers running.
Sure.
So initially, there were lots of kids in there, I'm pleased with the way it's settled and it's the way it's running now.
How long do kids sit on the bus?
Uh, some buses get here a little later than others, but even if your bus was extremely early, you're not on that bus more than ten minutes. In some cases, it's more than two minutes, five minutes.
So some people sit on the bus for ten minutes?
Could be up to ten, I can be off and observe it more specifically. So we've checked in with Josh, and he's still here.
Buses usually arrive between seven fifteen and seven twenty. Most of them are there, like, between seven fifteen and seven seventeen.
And then when do they unload?
Seven twenty-seven.
Give or take.
No, give or take.
No, give or take. That's exactly.
So one of the things we want, we want to monitor is, with Josh, are the kids on the bus getting unruly? Is it, is it a difficult management piece for the drivers? So far, so good in that regard.
Probably still sleeping, yeah.
And then the other piece to monitor is, are we still serving as many breakfasts as we have? In formal conversations, but Mary suggests that we're right on par with where we were last year. We have breakfast over until ten o'clock, so...
Anything else, Tim?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, Mr. Peterson, if, maybe you could, I don't know if it's already been done, I didn't hear anything, but just let the board know how the dance went Saturday?
Uh, the dance was great, we had, I think we counted, and you can miss a few, but I think we had up to eighty, and I was so impressed. I remember dances when I was a kid, there's a lot of things I tried to block out from also. We didn't have food, we didn't have fancy spread. What, what Lenny Edgerton and Terry Roberts were able to do, along with some help, and they had a lot of helpers there. Our kids had hot orders, cold orders, chips, different drinks. It was pretty impressive. And then they get, they were all dressed up, they had a photography station, it was pretty awesome. About eighty of our kids came, so after the homecoming dance, I was getting all nervous. Many kids don't go to dances anymore, but we had a pretty nice turnout Saturday. So it was great, man.
No, that's, I think that's it on my end.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Oh, one thing, unless I missed it, I didn't, I didn't see a disciplinary report. Are, are we not doing that anymore, or...
We can give those to you, I just...
Well, not just to me, to the whole board.
Right.
They're available to you, yeah?
Okay, why don't you say...
You just have a demand request for it, if you want one, I can get it to you monthly.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I thought we were doing, so...
Okay, I think we're all set, we'll get a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, passes, adjourned seven fifty-five.